The session is ends. Call it the order, all that stuff.
Well, if I may make a suggestion, let's uh... Shirley, do you have several um requests or?
I have several. Well, I have several issues, yes. Um, I've been collecting them. The first one that I was even in the middle of, Leota and I, was the beginning of 2016. We made a visit to, actually it was just that first or second week that Jane was auditor. And we had a situation where the payroll people weren't being, hadn't been paid for their overtime and they um... There was a question on how to compute the the um hourly rate. So Leota and I and Michelle Dudley went to Muncie to visit the attorney. And it started out, that's why I have all of this, and I'm sorry I don't have it together. I've now lost two of my people in the office. And so anyhow, they made several suggestions up there of things in the handbook that we should address. And they were the ones that helped us, helped the commissioners get the handbook when, you know, the original version of it. So Wagner, one Shelley.
Yes, I was part of.
And associates. So.
I was, I was part of the original handbook.
I was thinking that you had told me that. But they made several suggestions and it was because of some of the things that the legislature had changed. And so there is that letter that I have. And then I have um several page issues about holidays and things that came up. Our subcommittee, the Salary and Wage um Subcommittee, met earlier this year with Michelle. So Kay Peyton and Holly Dunn and myself met with Michelle Dudley. And I'm trying to find those particular notes now. And so I have several page, pages of notes that go along with that. And then there have been some emails back and forth. I can't say that they're all from Michelle because I think maybe some of them might have been from Janet. Because she was aware that we were working on this as well and that we were going to be speaking to it because we have talked about it in the Safety and Wellness Meetings that we had earlier in the year. And we talked about it last year. So does that answer your question?
I, I guess I was referring, I mean, I didn't know whether you had it right down to the sections that need to be addressed.
I had it right here, page 14, section 218, page 15, section 32, page 16, section 3.4, page 22, section 3.1, 6.4, page 25, section 4.1, and page.
Is that in the regular, the standard personnel or?
That's in the standard personnel. No, no, I think that would probably be the um 911. Sheriff jail 911 because this, this was related to.
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just take your suggestions or your questions, concerns by section, each section, and make notes, and then we can take those under advisement. You want to start?
Okay, yes, so we want to start with page 14.
You don't have a copy of the nine, of the emergency services. Do you have a copy?
No.
Jane, do we have, does Stephanie have some more copies of the emergency service?
Frank's end of book.
All right, get a couple. I'm sorry? Thank you. Under full-time to elected official employment?
Okay, in full-time to elected official employment. Can this include appointed department heads? And that they shall be compensated for any accrued vacation or compensatory time earned? For example, when I left the sheriff's department, I should have been paid for my vacation, but the payroll clerk refused. This is Michelle Dudley. Different budget, higher pay, higher rate of pay. See notes from meeting with Kent. So they're, again, I'm referring to that meeting of Kent. And as I go through and try this, I wished I'd had time to put together a package for you. And then it would have been simpler, but this has just evolved. So section 2.1A. In the event a full-time employee is elected to a full-time Fayette County elective office, he or she shall be compensated for any accrued vacation or compensatory time earned as a regular full-time employee. Such employee's sick days will be frozen and available for use in the event the elected official returns to a non-elected full-time position without any interruption in county employment. Also, such elected official returns to a non-elected full-time position, his or her time in elective office shall count as years of service for the purpose of determining the amount of eligible vacation time or other benefits based on years of service with the county.
And you're, you're saying, you're asking if we can, along with elected officials?
Well, it says, can this include, can this include, this is a question from Michelle. Include appointed department heads? And I, I think that would be her position. She's appointed department head.
I'm not sure why they wouldn't carry their vacation in there.
They would, they're full-time employees, like you and your full-time employee.
Well, again, we had a payroll clerk that was under a different auditor at that point in time. And quite frankly, some of the rules were.
Not, we don't, but she wouldn't have been paid for her vacation because we don't pay for vacation.
Right. She should have been allowed to accrue it or take it with her, take it with her.
I mean, isn't that how it's handled, Jane? I mean, if, if you're appointed to a position, if you've got earned vacation time, you still, you don't lose that vacation time. But we don't pay for that vacation time, right? Pay it out.
You wouldn't if you were a full-time employee going to an.
An appointed department head. What vacation you've earned, you're, we, we don't pay out, like, like if you leave employment.
I'm thinking about this. Because you don't make your appointed people, you treat them as like strictly salary, you don't make it, you don't make them track vacation time.
Okay.
So that could be a difference. I mean, I'm thinking like, okay, if you're a regular employee, Sarah goes from the treasurer's office to my office, all her benefits come with her. But in the case of, like, Michelle, you, you don't hold her to two weeks of vacation. I mean, she takes vacation whenever she wants to take vacation, however much she wants to take. So that could be where that interpretation of you don't get vacation anymore because we don't. With all of your department heads, you, you treat them as.
So I understand the statement is you don't get paid for your vacation, but you should have that same accrued vacation. And I don't know whether, she didn't have time to take it at, at the sheriff's department? I don't know what the issue is. I just know that she's identified.
Well, I can, I can almost bet the scenario. When she left the sheriff's department, she had two weeks worth of vacation. I'm just pulling that number.
And it was probably more than, more like four, but.
Accrued. She had, she had earned two weeks vacation that she had not used. She thought she was leaving employment, so she should have been paid out for those vacation days to take a department head's position. Now that, I'm, I'm just scenario. I, I'm assuming that's.
And quite frankly.
But you're not leaving employment. You're just changing.
But she still would have the opportunity to take those vacation days with her.
Yes.
And she should have took them off.
She would not have been paid out for them because she could still take vacation.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the particular rules about employee vacations. We had, we had, I worked at three different places and each of the ones were different, you know? You had a thing to use it or lose it. And that if you didn't take your vacation, all but one week would be gone. They, they couldn't take that one week from you. So I don't, I don't recall what this says about accrued or built-up vacation. Like, there's some specific.
Once you earn it, it's yours legally. We can't take it from you.
And it does have to be used within the year or your supervisor has to write a letter explaining why it wasn't used and it has to be used within three months.
Yes.
And I think there's some other notes that touch on that in the highway department contract. But I, do you know, Jane, is that the same?
I don't, I don't know.
For the highway department contract, there, there are also specific rules about that. Do you want to just continue, why don't we, why don't we continue on down the list? And then if, if I could get a couple of copies of these, I'll give you a copy of this and then I will put together that list that we have accumulated so that we can have this in a package so that you could do what, what you're hoping to do. Is that, is that a way to? Then page 15, section 3.2, work hours. Detail and clarify paid.
I'm sorry, what page?
Uh, page 15.
Oh, okay.
15, section 3.2, work hours. Detail and clarify paid meal periods such as length of time and entitlement. So Community Corrections Work Release Administrative Staff, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 with one hour unpaid lunch period scheduled at the discretion of the elected official department head. And then the facility offers, work officers work a varied shift to cover the 24/7, working 40 hours a week. Paid meal periods shall vary due to daily work schedule. Detail and clarify paid meal periods such as length of time entitlement. So the first one clearly says one hour unpaid lunch period. And it doesn't say that under the Community Corrections Work Release Facility Officers. It does talk about the 15-minute breaks for E-911 and dispatch.
Right, but Shirley, it, it clearly states that they're, they work a 40-hour work week, so if.
It don't matter, we don't have to worry too about it. One person there would politely be in.
No over Community Corrections is what she's talking about.
Paid meal periods, paid meal periods.
So, I mean, they're only going to get paid for 40 hours. So if a supervisor gives them 30 minutes or gives them an hour, opportunity to eat, that's, we're leaving it at, at the discretion of the department head.
I guess, you know, there's, there's.
I mean, this clause is.
Yeah, yeah. There's room for just a discrepancy in people. Some people, and I think it's maybe um, maybe the 911 rules that the supervisor, you know, holds the employees to might be different at 911 than it is for Community Corrections. And so what I would recommend.
So we're comparing it to 911 then?
Well, when I find the rest of my notes, I'll see if I can elaborate on, or elaborate on what she said. Again, this was early in the year, maybe March or so that we did this. Jail corrections officers, according to shifts, 8 to 4, 4 to 12, 12 to 8. Paid meal periods shall vary due to daily work schedule. I think that within that timing, there are differences. Employees shall be relieved of all duties to be free to leave their post during their lunch. Let me use an example. I can remember one of the examples that she said. Some people, they're working a 40-hour with a paid lunch. And they bring their lunch in. And they're working at the computer or, or whatever and someone, you know, they, they don't get their, do they get, do they get a half hour to go eat their lunch? When they're not getting, when they're being paid through their lunch? Do they get any time to go to the cafeteria or to go to the break room and sit down and eat their meal? That's one of the specific questions. So like you say, if they're, if they're working on a 40-hour week, they don't have an hour off for lunch every day. Their schedule is eight hours a day. So in that, do they get a half hour that they can go to the break room?
And do nothing but like, eat lunch?
Eat lunch, yes.
No, they don't. That's not what, I mean, that's what this is saying. No, they do not. They have to, if they have to get up from the desk, from the eating to perform their job duties, then they have to get up from the, isn't that what that's saying? I mean, they, they don't have a designated lunch-only time.
They have a movable time.
Yeah. If they've got a chance to eat, if they've got 30 minutes to eat and, and don't get disturbed, that was a great day. If, if they do get disturbed, they're required to get up. That's how I read this.
Okay. I'm glad that, you know, this is being recorded and then Michelle can take and review it and she can come back and, and give more specifics. Because again, I, I don't recall all of the different examples that she gave back then. Shall we just keep working down the list?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Page 16, section 3.4, compensation. Community corrections salaries are set by Community Corrections Advisory Board per statute 36-2-5-3 and 11-12-2-3.5. And as opposed to the discussion about compensation here. And Jane, I think this, this goes and speaks to, you know, we've had some discussion about that and you indicated you couldn't find the specific statute code numbers. And so these are two that she has given me. I have not gone to these specific codes and looked to see if that's what they use.
So is it your, Michelle's suggestion or your suggestion that that be changed to account for those IC codes?
That, yes, it should allow for, because it should allow for.
It says here county or the state of Indiana.
Okay, so basically if it says or the state of Indiana by statute. So that would be the case for the, what, the probation department and the community corrections?
Yeah, yeah.
And so.
I would think. I, I mean, I, I think we're covered under what she's required.
Well, yes.
What they're asking to be.
Like I said, we had, we had touched on this when, when it comes time to work on the salary ordinance. We have um, we've talked about that being, the Community Corrections operates under this special code and I, at the time, I couldn't give the specifics to Jane when she asked. But I believe that these are those specifics that she quoted. And that, you know, maybe if this is the time that you are going to be revising it, then information there could be included about.
Well, my only concern there, Shirley, I'm concerned that we're trying to take out control of the county council.
And I don't want to take out, and all I am, I am just being a conduit.
I, I understand. And I, I guess that was my response to that request.
There's, they're on the prior council, on the prior council, not this one because we haven't really gotten into it. But I think, you know, Mark may recall, there was a lot of, of discussion by the prior Salary and Wage Committee that whether it was or wasn't under this statute code for the Community Corrections Bor, Advisory Board to set the salaries, just like you. That was the county's responsibility and job. So there's disagreement on whether they could set, that advisory board could set it. There was disagreement in, in prior council.
And she's saying the state code gives that advisory board that right?
They, and.
To set those salaries or make recommendations to the council?
To set those salaries.
Okay, that would be our.
What are those IC codes again, please?
Pardon?
Those IC codes again?
What, what are those IC codes again?
Oh, okay, I didn't hear.
Are you in the process of trying to look them up or?
I was going to.
Okay.
Come out on the right page here.
16, yep, looks like it. She's talking about this paragraph here. Michelle thinks that it ought to be a reference to the IC code and, and I guess my.
The advisory board sets the salaries, not county.
She's saying that that's.
It says county or state.
Yeah.
It's. She can make a suggestion about salary compensation, compensation, the final decision is requiring compensation.
I still argue the fact that, and we had this discussion with probation when I was commisioner before. They were saying, well, the state mandates salaries being hit this and this. And, and, and my argument is the statutes also say that the council, county council names the number of employees and their wages, their salaries. And, and if this county can't afford something.
Something the city or county can.
Yeah, yeah.
And I understand. And this is, Community Corrections is handled differently than the probation department. Every year at council time, the probation person, Janet or Lawrence, whoever it has been that we've been working with, they bring the letter from the state. And I don't know who, who it is. Somewhere I have it. But who says this is what the year based on one to five years and six to 12 or, you know?
Pay schedule.
This, this is your basically pay schedule for the prosecutor's office. As opposed to when Michelle took over that office, you know, she took over from Bill Newkirk. And she started doing a lot of different things. Number one, the say what you do, do what you say and prove it. You know, the evidence-based documentation on what people are paid and their overtime criteria and whether they, what classification or category they're in. And she spent a lot of time, you know, studying the codes, just like, she's a lot like Jenny, the, wants to see what it says and therefore is she in compliance with it. And so once she found that and asked the rest of the board, it was a large board, it still is a large board. I don't know how many people are on that board. But when it says the board shall set. And so there was a committee, a group, and Janet was one of them. Janet, myself, Michelle got together and she did a survey. She invited all of the counties in the state that had a Community Corrections Department to send in, she did a survey, asking, much like that Foreign Bureau um book, what are the people paid in your county and what are their duties and responsibilities? So that you could see, and again, the people there's pay was well below average and, and normal. So anyhow, they, they, we, this committee, set up a recommendation based on what the averages were for the state. We put it in a spreadsheet and then set up a salary range. A range that would be for a new person that would just take the position with no experience would get the low end of that range if it was for that classification of employee, whether it was an administrative person, a part-time person, or what are the other different job classifications?
The A, B, C, and D down there.
Pardon?
The A, B, C, and D on page 16.
Okay, similar, similar to like that.
Comments, pat, or poll.
Yes, but not so much that as, you know, the job descriptions as they relate to the Community Corrections. But yes, so there was a range. So in other words, if you, if you came into this position then, and you had the qualifications, you would, could be paid a range of low to high. Well, if you had 30 years' experience somewhere else, you might be paid towards the high end. If you were just some new person graduating from college, you would probably be paid on the lower end because you don't have any experience. So that range of numbers was set up on each of the employees at that time. And by the way, this was long before some of these big grants came that added extra people. So I don't, I don't have that particular information in front of me, but that's how they did it. And then that board presented that recommendation to the advisory board. The, the subcommittees presented the recommendation to that. And then based on, based on that, then the specific number was arrived at that went on the 144 form. Do you want to move on to maximum compensatory time accrual?
Okay, what page do you have for that?
That's number 22. Currently states use of time must be within 90 days of accrual. Possibly change that to 180 days. Section 3.16.4. They accrue 480 hours before monetary compensation is required. However, sheriff may set lower accrual limits. The maximum accrual for all non-exempt is 240 hours. Employees' accrual of compensatory hours shall be monitored ensuring that employees schedule use of compensatory time within 90 days. So can it be changed to 180 days is what they're asking there. In other words, give them six months instead of three months.
And that reasoning request is for?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember.
Now, is this one, are these things that you've ran by Ir, Irwin's office in the past or none?
No, no, there was only that one meeting with Irwin's office. And again, I, at this minute, don't have that letter in front of me.
Well, I think, you know, everybody, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think laws, labor laws require us to, to adopt the 480 and the 240. That we have to pay for anything over those hours.
Right.
But labor laws, I'm not sure, I can't remember. But labor laws, I'm not sure, I can't remember for sure whether labor laws require this 90 days. Is, is-
Right. So the question is-
Is the 90 days under labor law or is it a in-house rule? My concern, I guess my concern and what I was, would be looking at this as a department head, if I allowed this time to strain more than 180 day, or more than 90 days, it creates a scheduling nightmare for me to try to run my department efficiently and effectively. If I let them go out that full hundred, six months, it just creates that much more-
Staining their time to-
Yeah.
... things to do.
I mean, that's my first, trying to look at it from a department head's standpoint. I can see where the employees would like to have that six months, but I could see where that could create more of a headache for the department.
I, I ran across this schedule of salaries too. This is, this was fiscal year 2015 through 2017. And their budget starts July the 1st through June 30th. And so anyhow, this, again, I can make copies of everybody, but this is what I was talking about, where the committee recommended the low to the top for administrative assistant, facility officer, field officer, case manager, facility field supervisor, assistant director and executive director. And so again, it set it up because the statement is if in fact those codes are accurate, then the advisory board sets the person's wages for the 144 for the county as opposed to-
County council.
Pardon?
County council. As opposed to county council.
As opposed to county council. So do you want to, we can just keep moving on down?
Yeah, let's just kind of slow and move through this so we can make notes and then take things under it.
Yeah, I have a copy here of your, your name, Gary Naylor, Doug Howard, and Russ Seidel, Jane Clanny. This was June 15th of '04. Again, I'm looking for the notes. Section, page 25, section 4.1, vacation. And this might or might not define what she was talking about up there on the page, on And this kind of falls in something that we had a discussion about when we were working on the budget this year and the fact that, you know, you might be interviewing people for the 911 director job or any new job. Vacation time off reaches a max of 20 workdays after 15 years of service. And perhaps because our ability to pay people has been so little because of the tax, you know, the income situation or the, not the emergency condition, but frugal times, that might be something you would want to look at because giving people additional sick days or additional vacation time off or personal days is a way to compensate some long-term employees without necessarily causing the county more money. And so that's, that is my own statement, that's not Michelle or anyone else saying Because a lot of times, we can't compete with, with formal employers with dollars, but maybe the fact you're working in a small organization, you can do benefits.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, you have the old manual, but I think this was a vacation schedule that was established way before the original manual, handbook.
Okay.
When we had more employees. And since this was developed, we've even, the council has had to, was forced by budget restraints to cut personnel.
Yes.
And if we are adding more days off, then that is even less production. I, I mean, I understand what you're saying as far as compensation, but that kind of shifts the burden over to the commissioners. I mean, the council, rather than giving a raise, let the commissioners deal with giving more days off.
Right. I am not, I'm not here to suggest the pros and the cons, just that the fact that there are other, there are other options. I'm hoping that we won't always be in a state of fiscal emergency. I think, I'm hoping that someday, maybe, maybe the legislator will go back in and readdress the tax caps or, you know, something. The Constitution can be changed, the rules can be changed if something doesn't work. But I just wanted to make that-
Actually, I wanted to, and we've talked about it a little bit just in passing, I wanted to address the vacations and sick days and holiday paid, the paid time off. And I wanted to address the idea of creating a paid time off schedule by earned hours worked, rather than having set vacation days and set sick days, set paid holidays. If you create a earned time off schedule, then people can use that time how they wish. They can be paid, they can take the holiday off paid, or they can take sick days, use them for sick days, they can use them for vacation days, they can use their sick days, you know, there won't be any sick days, so-
Personal days.
They can take, they can use them as personal days. It gives the employee a lot more flexibility with those days off. And by having a multiplier times their hours worked, it will add more work to Stephanie and HR because they will have to calculate those hour, each, keep a calculation of those hours worked each week or each pay period. But I've, I've looked at some examples like Henry County Hospital, for instance, uses earned time off. Fayette Memorial or Fayette Regional, I'm assuming they still use earned time off.
State highways.
The state highways.
Government offices that produce-
Yeah. And I've looked at some of their multipliers and, and if we use these multipliers with the one to five years of time of service, the six to 15 as we do, and 16 and greater, they, they will have the same amount of days in a year's time, approximately the same amount of days with their current paid holidays, their current sick days, and their current vacation days will all add up to the same or pretty close to the same off. And it allows them, because right now, you can't use a sick day to add on to your vacation.
Okay.
But in this instance-
You can put days with everything.
They can use their whole earned, if they've got 10 days earned time off and they become ill, they can use all 10 days of those if they want paid for those 10 days off. Or if they want to take a vacation and go away for 10 days, they can use the full 10 days. The commissioners would still establish, okay, we're going to recognize these holidays for the year. And if the courthouse is so closed, each employee will have the option, do I want that day paid or do I want to save that day for a vacation time?
Right. And that, that seems to me a good alternative, a good way to give, to recognize-
Now, what I would like to add to that, I would like to see us give that to our part-time employees as well. For the hours that they work, they earn a certain amount of paid time off. It helps our, helps give some of our paid, our part-time people some-
A little more incentive.
Incentive. That they, they can take time off from work and, and it'd be compensated for. Because we have a lot of part-time employees that, they just don't come in once in a while.
They're here every day.
They're here every day.
And we have a lot of them.
For a certain amount of hours, less than full-time.
Up to 28.
Yeah. And, and so somehow we need to compensate.
So this is the section that needs to be updated. What Michelle is asking for here is that maybe the clarification, so it says here, after two years to nine years gets 10 days. See, section number three, we're on page 25. Then she says after nine years to 15 years, you get 15 days. So does nine, does nine years get 10 days or 15 days?
Nine years gets 10 days. Because it says after nine, that's beginning your 10th year.
Nine years and one day, we make it after nine. After, after nine, so nine years and one day.
I mean, declare by that, I mean, to better state that, that could be 10, 15 years.
Yeah, I think that needs to be, you know, do you, do you get, on the anniversary day of your ninth year, do you get that, and are you getting your vacation in the calendar year or your anniversary year? Do you know what I'm saying, Jane? And I don't know how Jane and Stephanie figure that out, but that, that's something that always lends to questions. Do you get, because-
And this should, and really this should say, if we stay with this, this should read, excuse me, two, two to nine years gets 10 days. 10 to 15 years gets 15 days.
Yeah.
16 and above get 20 days.
That's the way it should be rewritten?
Yeah.
Yes.
If we stay with this schedule.
If we stay with it. And then define, then define, is that, so in the calendar year where you reach that milestone, are you eligible to get that extra week in that calendar year or do you have to?
Vacation goes by anniversary date.
Pardon?
It goes by anniversary date, it doesn't go by calendar year.
Okay. So the minute that you-
And that is in the handbook, isn't it?
I'm looking for it real quick because that is something I would like to see changed.
So it's, it's wishy-washy.
And Jane, we've talked about that before. Your reasoning for wanting to go to year?
I think it would be easier to keep track of because like in, in my office, let's say, just for example, Jill's anniversary date is in May and Terri's is in August and Stephanie's is in February and Sarah's is in December. At any given point, I can't say, in my office, we have X number of unused vacation days that need to be used by the end of the year because everybody has a different year. And so I think it would be easier to keep track of if you did it in a calendar year.
So that, that would go back to Shirley's question then, if we went to a calendar year.
And you'd have to maybe deal with some of those things if you make the change.
Yeah.
But at least, but then, like some of the other things that, that we have done to avoid confusion, you, you deal with it that first time, you make the change, and then from then on, it's easy.
Yeah.
Like Jane says, you have until December 31st to take your vacation days.
If you, all right, my, my anniversary, I'm going to be, I'm going to get 10 years in this year, in September, for instance. So then do, starting in January, according to what you're saying, I'll bump up to the 15 days off under this schedule.
Right now, you bump up in September, but your, your vacation goes September to September.
Right. But what you're saying, then I would get it, I would have gotten it last January.
January first to the next year.
Next year or this year? Because I, I hit my 10 years within-
If you hit 10 within the year, well, the way this reads now is after nine, so like when you would hit 10, you would get it.
So would I qualify for it in January because-
If you don't hit your 10 until September, you're saying, would you qualify for it last January?
Yes.
I would think no.
Because it's all in that calendar year.
Right.
I hit it within that calendar-
I mean, that would be for you guys to decide.
I mean, that, that's my question. If we go to a calendar year, and I understand what you're saying, it would be easier, it would alleviate the bookkeeping. But I'm just in question of, okay, do I qualify for it in January of the year I turned, get 10 years? Or do I not, do I qualify for the next January?
I would think not until the next January, but I know that doesn't make me popular with important.
Seriously, I think that's, that's a thing to talk to the Wagner about, the how do most people do, like you say, like Jane says, it wouldn't make you popular, but, because a lot of times, you're accruing vacation days. So what if, what if somebody has three weeks vacation and they're going to come in and resign, but they haven't, they haven't used their three weeks vacation and now they're going to be leaving? So you, you accrue those vacation days, right, Jane? They don't get-
Not the way the handbook is written now, no. You get it on your anniversary date.
On your anniversary date. You get on-
Get your full year, yes, because we had a situation where an employee worked three days into the new year-
Whereas if we would go to that-
And got 20 days of paid day off.
People can stall their retirement off and get them extra days.
Well, if we do do, go to an earned time off, then it would be accrued because you have to work before you earn it.
Yeah. That, in my way of thinking, when I'm going to the AIC conferences, the attorneys, that they say it needs, it should be clarified, it should be clarified. And really, we shouldn't be handing people four weeks of pay, four weeks of vacation pay if they leave, if they haven't earned that year. I mean, they've earned a lot of it up to this point, but come January, if you're accruing it, you know, you have not accrued all your vacation days yet this year.
Now, I know, if I remember right, Jane, I think we went, when I was at the First Aid Unit, we went on a calendar year. But like if my anniversary date was in September, for instance, and I was going, this was the year I was going to bump up in vacations, I wouldn't earn that extra vacation until September, my anniversary date.
Right.
I didn't earn it, or I didn't get it in January.
You.
But I got it. Any new vacation or the next step up, it still went by anniversary, hiring date, anniversary date. But the, but you used your vacation time. I mean, if I gained an extra week in, on September 1st, for instance, that extra week, I didn't have- Sep, on September first, for instance, that extra week, I didn't have a, a full year to use it. I only had till December thirty-first to use that new week. So it went on a cal, my vacation time went on a calendar week, but if I earned a new step up in that year-
And then the next year, it goes all back to normal?
Yeah, it's, it's a full year. So that could be a way that you could do that, to make sure-
That's what they do in the brush.
That come January one, if I'm supposed to bump up in September, I don't bump up January one.
You bump up-
And leave in February, then I get to take that extra week's vacation. No, you wouldn't, in that situation, you wouldn't get to do that. So that, that, yeah, we need, I mean, if we don't change-
It needs qualification. If, if in fact, if too many people did what we had to do with the one Jane said, we had to pay out twenty, you know, twenty days early in the year, I personally, each, each day you work, you earn some vacation time, and I think that's weigh a lot of court-
And if you went to an earned time off, pay, a system, it would be very easy to calculate that.
I think that would, that would be better for the county, I think it would be better if it were clarified and-
Okay.
And then, like you say, it should start ten to fifteen years instead of-
Mm-hmm.
And then the last one on this list was holidays, which is page twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Page twenty-seven, four point two, holidays. Sheriff's Department and Community Corrections, Facility and Field, will be worked into the rotation of schedules, see Jane, and I don't have a clue what that means. Schedule of holidays will be determined annually by the Board of Commissioners. Other sheriff and E-91 full-time employees shall receive regular pay for these holidays designated, that isn't what you're saying.
We do determine, we appoint the holidays, it'll be used every year, and first of January, our first meeting of January, the holidays are set, what days they're going to take, like, we don't take President's Day, and it's taken as the day, day after Thanksgiving and-
Right. Well, I think what you say here, Sheriff's Department and Community Corrections, they don't get to take those days off, we have to cover twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. So their holidays will be worked into the rotation of schedule, see Jane.
That, that is what we discussed, Jane, they are, Beth, for instance, does the scheduling in the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
She sets up the schedule, she allows them, if they still want to take the holiday off, she allows them to take it off anytime within that pay period of the holiday pay.
Okay.
That's offered, correct, Jane?
Yeah.
And doesn't say that in here, that that's how it's done?
No, it says that they'll work it in.
Yeah, so, again, that evidence-based, say what you do, do what you say, and prove it, so it should be clearly called out.
needs to be taken out, period.
Sheriff's, merit officers, community corrections, community, or corrections, officers and dispatchers shall be paid annually at their regular rate of pay for the total number of holidays designated within the year for such employees, one holiday is equal to a regular ownership. Yeah, I don't understand that.
Basically, that's telling us that we shall pay out annually, once, once a year, all twelve or fourteen holidays, whatever we-
Comes January one, we give them a check for all the holidays for the year, whether they work that year or quit two days afterwards.
Yeah, and we don't, I mean, because you didn't earn that, you quite possibly didn't earn that holiday.
Okay.
And that has, has never been done, to my knowledge.
No.
I'm not sure why it was ever put in the handbook.
Yeah, I know.
Again, that's just one of those things to clean up.
Jane, can you, can you put it in better words for me, how you and Beth and Michelle?
Well, they, I just know they schedule, they give like a float, it's kind of a floaty holiday, they schedule it within-
Can you put that in the form of a paragraph?
Can.
Language so that we can-
Like right this minute or like-
No, no, no. Can you just make a note?
Yes.
Because I know you, the two, the three of you discussed that-
Right.
In quite detail, and the way they had come, the way they had deciphered the holiday pay was, for those employees, it gave them the best of either world.
Okay.
They could either get paid for it and work the holiday, or if they wanted another day off, they allowed them to take it off within their, within that pay-
Pay period.
Period. They couldn't stretch it out to July fourth, they couldn't stretch out and take it off for Christmas.
Yeah, they couldn't, they couldn't bank it, and those hours, what made it different from, at the time, the way, based on the various emails with Kent Urban's office, with the different department heads, what made it different from the way 911 was doing it? 911 was allowing those employees to bank those holidays, so, for example, in May, we had employees that started banking holidays from January, and the employees were allowed to use those at their discretion, similar to like after-vacation days, as opposed to in the jail and Community Corrections, Beth and Michelle Dudley scheduled for the convenience of the department. And they schedule it within the pay period or, or within the month at the very least. So, you know, your January holidays were being used in January, February's being used in February. So throwing all that out there in case somebody is watching this one, you told 911 they couldn't do it? No, it was a different situation.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I would like to get to the place where if we recognize, and I'm just pulling this out of the hat, twelve holidays for the year, I'd like to get to the place where our emergency service personnel, if they work on that holiday, then we pay them holiday pay. Period. If you don't work, it wasn't your scheduled day anyway. So, I mean, why should we compensate them for a day that they wasn't going to work That, that's my only concern, and, and to be quite honest with you, that's the way I was paid when I worked for the city. We, in order to get a holiday pay, you had to work that day. If you wanted, if you wasn't scheduled for that day, it wasn't one of your holidays.
Well, I found my notes here, it was June thirteenth that we met, and it was Michelle Dudley, Holly Dunn, Kate Payton, and myself. And on that page fourteen, the paid vacation days, the suggestion was, can it, can it be put on the payroll voucher, like for instance, how many vacation days and how many sick days or whatever, and I think you're doing some of that, are you not, Jane?
It's on the time sheets.
It's on the time sheets, so individual, so, so that people are aware, and I, then, I don't know how you could get, I don't know how we can accumulate or recognize, recognize an accumulated liability. So that, we'll use the example of Amy, working for Judge Freed, because I think she's worked for forty-some years.
She keeps her cop time maxed out, or she used to anyway.
And anyhow, when you have a small budget, your department has a small budget, and then all of a sudden, let's just say come January of 2018, she would elect to retire, that would be a substantial check, and it could blow a small department's budget out of the water if you couldn't, if you couldn't recognize that as a liability. And that's probably an attorney question, because just having to write that check could be a big sum of money and blow somebody's budget out of the water. So that's, that was the note there.
I guess, Shirley, my question would be, well, what's the answer, what's the solution to that?
Yeah.
Because the law, labor laws tell us that-
That's, that's why I think the best money you can spend is going back and talk to these attorneys that practice that labor law, and who know what the lawsuits have, you know, what, where the loopholes have cost counties money. And we need to make sure we're following the letter of the law. Here's, here's another note on that, first one, on, on Michelle's vacation, quote, "Should have been paid out of the jail budget, not the Community Corrections budget." But again, like Jane says-
She didn't leave it.
They didn't write a check for those vacation days, because she really was never-
She didn't leave employment.
She did not leave the county employment, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to show you that that was the other note that I made. And then the work hours, what is a paid meal, meal period needed in writing be defined so it can be enforced, Department of Labor standard, if minors are required to give thirty to forty minutes, one hour a day versus thirty or forty minutes, you know, it, it just needs to be called out black and white.
I'm sorry, Shirley, say that again.
The paid lunchtime needs to be stated exactly how long it is.
Okay.
In writing, so you can enforce it. Minors are required, if you're required to give minors thirty to forty minutes, or one hour a day, thirty to forty minutes, whatever it is, that's, that should be put in there. What, was that on page fifteen?
That was on page fifteen, yes.
But I guess, I'd go back to, on that statement, and I understand what they're saying. However, what we are saying in here is, you do not get a designated time, uninterrupted time to eat your meat.
And she's just asking for it to be clarified so that everybody can be treated the same way?
Well, not everybody can be treated the same way, that's the, that's why it's all spelled out difficult, I think, isn't it? I mean, I mean, I don't-
I'm, I'm missing the fine line that Michelle, the-
Paid meal periods shall-
What, what Michelle is asking specifically.
I mean, see, the jail says the same thing, for the jail.
Okay, and then, so-
Or jail officers.
In that same thing with lunch, what about smoke breaks? How many and how long? Because the smokers-
They could get that if your lunch break you put on.
Well, again-
Just, just real quick-
Why would you pay for a smoke break?
I'm on the Indiana Department of Labor's website, one of the frequently asked questions is regarding breaks, question, are employers required to provide breaks to employees? Answer, Indiana state law does not require employers to provide rest breaks, meal breaks, or breaks for other purposes to adult employees. You don't have to provide any kind of a break.
But if you're a minor, if you're-
Well, we don't have any minor employees.
Minors are required.
Right, but we don't have any minor employees.
We don't have any employee-
Minor employees.
Nobody under eighteen.
Yeah, I, this is a, this is a no-smoking facility.
It's a no-smoking facility. Therefore, our smokers sometimes take smoke breaks. Now, maybe the courthouse doesn't have any of those, but in my opinion, Michelle has people over at Community Corrections that do want to take smoke breaks, and they can't smoke in that building either. So, how many and how long? And so if the state doesn't require that you give any-
Zero.
Is the county going to allow you to give any, and if they do, how many and for how long?
If you go in jail, you don't get no smoke break.
No.
But these people aren't in jail, they are our employees.
Oh, I understand that, but-
And I, yeah.
They have to, if they want to smoke, number one, they have to leave the property.
Correct.
Period.
I understand.
So, these here, the work release field and facility officers, they're not allowed to leave the property during their work hours.
What page are you on?
On page fifteen.
Okay.
They are not allowed to leave the facility for their eight-hour shift. So there are no smoke breaks.
Well, again, this manual was probably written before, before the no-smoking laws were passed in Indiana, and I don't know when the courthouse no-smoking policy took place, or took effect.
But, I, I mean-
I'm, I'm asking for, you know, the sake of all of our employees who haven't been able to quit, all right, I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples, we have two of our seven council members who must take smoke breaks. Now, we don't have to, but they elect to leave and take breaks greater than eight foot from the doors. We wouldn't hold a vote when they're gone, I don't think.
But if you still have a quorum, you can't, there's no reason why you should hold up a meeting for, for a personal smoke break.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean-
That'll learn them.
Yeah, I'll teach them.
I keep telling, one of them, he needs to go down and talk to Paula, that we have nicotine patches available in Fayette County that are free through the health department.
And all you're saying is, they're requesting smoke breaks.
Yes, yes, and so, can you put something in there? And again, the state says you don't have to. We can say you don't have to, but these are our employees, and we don't really want them to not be our employees anymore.
Well, no, I'm not saying-
I don't think it's fair to Community Corrections people not have-
When they said, don't smoke in your trucks, that's exactly what they meant, you didn't smoke in their trucks.
I mean, we have rules at work, at our workplace, you know, if you can find a spot to smoke, then outside, fine, but you don't smoke in any of the hog barns, you don't smoke in any of the grain facilities.
That's problem clear.
You don't, you don't smoke in any of the vehicles. So if you can find someplace in between there-
Take a little walk or something.
Here on page fifteen, Community Corrections, it says they have paid meal periods that shall vary due, due to daily work schedule. And right under that, the E-91 and dispatch have paid meal periods, consist of two fifteen-minute breaks and shall be varied due to daily work schedule. I think we need to have the same thing available to Community Corrections that we do to E-911. If you have two fifteen-minute breaks as their paid meal for one department, there's no reason we can't give paid meal breaks, the same thing to-
The same, the same for corrections. And, and the jail slash, so, who are the merit officers?
That's a merit board, or merit officers or deputies.
Deputies.
Merited officer. And I guess I got a problem with the two fifteen-minute breaks for 911 though, Leota, because if there's a disaster going on, and I need two people in the seats in there-
Yeah.
They better darn well come back and sit in their seat.
And it says it can vary due to daily work schedule, so I guess if it's, if there's a disaster-
And if I've got guards over there watching work release prisoners, and they're off in the lunchroom eating, and there's a fight breaks out back there, they better darn well come back and take care of the fight, leave their lunch.
Yeah.
And I, I guess that's what this is saying, I mean, I'm of the opinion that we take the two fifteen-minute breaks out for 911, even.
Well, that's why, but it, it should be consistent. It should be consistent.
Yeah.
And that's, that's part of the point.
But, and it's just like jail officers, I mean, jail officers say the same thing. Their meal periods shall vary due to the daily work schedule. Well, I, I'm not so sure that all three of those paragraphs should not read the same.
Well, I, I-
So let's cross out the consist of two fifteen-minute breaks.
Yeah, yeah.
It shall vary due to the daily work schedule. If they have to set their designate, that's fine, but-
And if they have to come back to answer calls or, or answer a fight- And if they have to come back to answer calls or, or answer a fight or whatever, then they have to get up.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think-
You would, you would hope that they would, I mean, just on that-
And I, I, yes, and I'm not saying that they would, that, please don't take that wrong.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, believe me, I'm not, and I don't want you to take that I'm, I'm just a conduit here, and I think that there's, there's reason for-
That's the reason we're having this meeting today.
That's why the reason for having the meeting.
There's too many things that we've already crossed out, a couple, three sentences and some other things that we've made notations on.
Back on the comp time here, I made note, comp time only when time is available. So, you know, it's one thing to give comp time instead of overtime, but what if you never have the available time to take your comp time?
Is this Mr. Mayor?
I don't know if anything can be done on that one. And then there are seven holidays between mid-October and December 31st of 17. So, how do you, how do you deal with that? Jane, is, is that also in that same pay period? So, is it a real challenge with those seven holidays?
They work them out. I, I, to my knowledge, I've not, I've not been told it's a problem.
Okay, well.
So. The only thing back on that lunch is I'm reading this, that employees shall be relieved of all duties and be free to leave their post during their lunch. I think that was meant to apply to the ones who are having the unpaid lunch.
Right.
But it doesn't specify that. Because to me, anybody that's being paid through their lunch is, is like what Gary said, they're, they're still on duty, that's why we're paying them.
They're still on duty, they're eating at, at their desk, watching the lunch.
Right, so they can't say, "I'm going to be relieved of all duties and free to leave my post." So that needs to be clarified to say the ones who have unpaid lunch periods.
Yeah. And, and another one of the examples is, okay, so, so you, let's say it's a community corrections employee, and they normally get a paid, they're paid through lunch, but they, are they then free to go and do, like Gary said, you can't leave and go get a sandwich. If you're on a paid lunch, you can't get in the car, go over to Burger King or, or Wendy's or Rips and get a sandwich. In that hat, you know, is it a half hour window, can you go get it or not? Or is that, what exactly does that mean? Paula?
It means bring your lunch, enjoy it.
Yeah.
Stop and pick it up at Wendy's or Rips on your way in.
On your way in.
Or brown bag it from home, whichever. But you can't be running off the site or the premises during that time.
Oh.
So we need to cross out that sentence, employees shall be relieved of all duties.
No, I mean, you can leave it in there for the ones who are unpaid.
Yeah.
Because if you're not paying them, you have to relieve them of all duties.
Yeah.
So, so those employees can leave and can be free from all duties.
For unpaid lunches. That needs to be added so that if they don't think they can do so, if they're being paid for lunch, they can't run away.
And-
We expect them to be there.
And, and back on making the three things consistent as far as breaks, again, do you, can you put the verbiage in there that includes smoke breaks or doesn't include smoke breaks or, you know, I, I think you have to include the smoke breaks in there. How many and how long? So, if you include smoke breaks in that verbiage, then you don't have to say how many and how long because you've already said that, if in fact you're paid or unpaid.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing on this page, marijuana is illegal in Indiana. It's an illegal substance in Indiana.
Because we're talking about doing-
And if you're officers, officers have to pass, I don't know, random drug tests. I don't know if we require-
Yeah.
The 24, all the ones that fall under this personnel. What if, so, what if you're vacationing in Colorado or some other state that it is allowed for recreational use? Do you allow that or not? Because if they then can't pass the drug test, the next time, well, I, it was allowed, I could do it out of Colorado.
Well, they're not in Colorado, they're back in Indiana.
But they are an employee in Indiana, and do we need to call that out in here somewhere too? Because-
Okay, let me ask you this Shirley, if, if, if an employee goes out on Sunday evening and goes to a party and drinks excessive amount of alcohol-
Mm-hmm.
And comes to work on Monday morning and gets pulled for a drug test-
Right.
Uh, for some odd reason, they're, they're incoherent or whatever the case may be.
Whatever, whatever.
Maybe, and they still test for public intoxication.
Uh-huh.
They were allowed to drink it on Sunday.
Right, right.
They're not on Sunday.
But they now have to know when to quit in order to, that's right, to pass the drug test.
So, so otherwise, marijuana stays in your system for 30 days.
Yeah.
So, in my opinion, if you come back to work a week after being in Colorado, you, you're not giving it the 30 days.
You're not giving it the 30 days, and so-
You're Dr. Schlitt.
So again, you know, when you're talking to the attorneys, have other, how have other counties dealt with this? You know, are you better off not to say anything so then it can be interpreted one way or the other? Or you're just going to wait until it happens and then you have a big to-do about it? It, it's being proactive to address it while you're addressing, while you're addressing it.
Where is that at? I'm sorry. What section?
Well, I made the notes-
Under the drug-
Under the page 22 and at the bottom of the page. I guess we were still talking at the end of the notes, that, that's when that came up. I also made a note about a code of ethics. Do we need a policy to cover a code of ethics? And that's where I think you get into some of the, you don't come to work if you're still hungover or what have you, does that fall under that code of ethics? That was a suggestion. Do we need, do, do we need a policy or a statement about code of ethics? And then prescription does not have THC. So this again is the, the marijuana law, so if you have someone, the doctor prescribes cannabis oil, does it have or not have THC? I don't know, I haven't-
Them, them doctors that prescribe that can also give them a pill that make it work, doesn't show up on the drug test too.
Well, again, Michelle, who I'm sure goes through this every day with people being randomly drug tested for community corrections and also Jana for probation, it, that doesn't have THC, so therefore it would, it shouldn't cause a problem.
Yeah.
Those were just the notes that I made back on June, whatever.
But is the, is the medical oil, it, it was, it didn't go through, it didn't pass the legislature, did it? It's not legal yet in Indiana, is it? The cannabis oil?
I think it is.
Did they make it?
I think it is. I think you can go up to Nature's Nook in Richmond and buy TV, whatever that is. I don't, I don't know, I don't use it.
I knew there was a bill-
Okay.
But I, I couldn't remember whether it went through or not.
Well, I think you can buy it. Now, if you use it, would you get arrested? I, I don't know, Gary, so don't-
No, I, because it doesn't, I, I was told the other night, because as a matter of fact, there was somebody, a friend of mine was talking about it, he has used it in the past for irritation, itching, irritation.
Uh-huh.
And it has worked and, and there is no THC or whatever it is-
Right, whatever it is.
In it, so it doesn't show up, I mean, there's no side effects to it, of the nature of that. So, so I know it wouldn't, it wouldn't show up on drug test.
It should show up.
But still, I have to show a prescription, I mean-
Yeah. My wife's brother had a little bad diabetic, and they gave him the, they gave him marijuana to smoke, but they also gave him a pill that would take it so that he could take a drug test and it would not show nothing.
And it probably didn't give him the side effects of the THC as well, yeah.
That should be a question. You know, I know that our time, your time, the commissioner's time talking to these attorneys is billable hours and it's going to cost money, but I think it, it's a whole lot less expensive to pay that for them, some billable hours to help make sure that we get everything up to date with the newest, latest and greatest regulations than to wait until something happens that we have a big lawsuit.
Remember, we could just get to counsel to add-
There were 16 people on the advisory board for community corrections.
Add a line to the budget for handbook updates.
That would be all right.
Shirley didn't hear that, did she?
Jane, do you think we've resolved? Well, we have. We resolved the payroll issues for last year.
It's going to cost some money.
And by going to a bi-weekly salary ordinance, that theoretically, we should never have a question about what the hourly rate is based on. They thought us in that condition.
Yeah, I don't, I'm pretty sure that's resolved.
Could ever happen again, but-
Yes, it will, unless we change to a bi-monthly pay period.
Right.
The bi-weekly will get us into an extra pay period again in 11 years, I think it is, something.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that was a terrible question, yeah.
But she's trying to, she, there were questions with how to determine the hourly rate.
Right, oh. Questions regarding payroll issues for pay accounting. This, this was what we went up there to Muncie. How do you recommend the hourly rate to be calculated for salary position? How do you recommend the bi-weekly rate of pay to be calculated for salary position? What years' pay rate should work perform, performed in one year but paid in the following year be paid at? So, is it paid the same as you were making when you performed?
What you earned, yeah.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what we're, is the salary amount listed on the salary ordinance for work performed in that calendar year or pay actually paid out in the calendar year? And do you recommend the salary be worded in the salary ordinance as annual or bi-weekly? So that, that got addressed. So all that that had to do with the payroll calculations, that got fixed. Because they wanted to divide the pay periods by 27 when we had that extra pay period in there, and then that of course messed everybody's hour wages up. If an employer is having trouble meeting payroll, do they need to pay non-exempt employees on the regular payday?
Say that again Shirley, I'm sorry.
If an employer is having trouble meeting payroll, do they need to pay non-exempt employees on the regular payday? And the other thing, late payment resulted in an FLSA violation. I think that, those issues came as, for whatever reason, I think it was the sheriff's office had employees that had, had worked overtime, but the overtime was not included in the pay. So they had gone for like, you know, two months and they didn't get their overtime pay. And again, I, I don't know the particulars, but I think that has not happened. That, that particular thing has been addressed.
Well, and, and I think that, and I can remember years past when, especially the sheriff's department, because back then, mainly the sheriff's department was the only one that had overtime. If the sheriff did not have it in the jail budget or the sheriff's budget, if he had ran out of overtime, he could not pay it until the additional appropriation went to the council, was advertised, went to the council, and then approved by the council.
Okay.
And then they were paid for their back overtime. But that's, I, I mean, that's statutorily, I mean, Jane cannot write a check if there's no money in that line item.
Right, and I would hope that there would be a meeting to call, a call, a meeting called by the council to somehow approve that money so that the people could be paid instead of not paying them. I hope that's what would happen.
Well, and, but still, there's a time period, it has to be advertised 10 days, doesn't it?
Additional appropriation, of course.
Additional, yeah, so you're, you're 10 days away, you're almost a whole pay period away from legally being able to do that additional appropriation.
And then what happens in December, the DLGF won't accept any additional appropriations after, like last year, I want to say it was December 15th or something-
Yeah, yeah.
Was the last day that they would accept them. So at, at that point, you couldn't have another meeting.
You had to go in-
You have to go in the next year-
Yeah.
Because whether there's money, and hopefully they're watching it close. Those, those five questions were answered, and I'm going to read just some of these. So question number five, how do you recommend the salary be worded on the salary ordinance as an annual salary or bi-weekly? So that recommendation was that we use the hourly rate and an overtime rate on the salary ordinance, but other areas of concern were discussed. Compensatory hours, providing the auditor with a current list of all compensatory hours to determine financial liability. So, you know, we talked on that, but we, we don't recognize that liability. Providing accrued vacation, sick, holiday and compensatory leave to the auditor payroll clerk each payroll period, tracking these amounts on the attendance sheet for each payroll period. So I think that's another thing that Jane's got that all under control. New hires need to sign the acknowledgement page of their job description upon hire stating that they are capable of performing their duties. I don't know if there's something in here or if you've addressed that.
Signed.
Pardon?
I mean, all new employees sign, do sign, they sign that that's the job description and then they sign off that they've received a copy and read the handbook.
Okay.
And that, that is done at your office, right?
Yes, Stephanie does that for all.
And that's new employees, but that does not include elected officials, is that correct?
Right.
Which elected officials don't fall under the handbook.
Right. Offer of conditional employment form. I'm not sure why that goes there. The issue of employees not being paid overtime by the previous payroll clerk and it being a violation of the Federal Fair Labor Standard Act. Employees not receiving handbook updates. I don't know why that's there. Vacation days not being paid out when leaving employment from one county department to another, budgetary issues associated. So it's departmental issues instead of county employee issues. So that, I think that probably still relates to the sheriffs versus community corrections. Law changes due in 2016 addressing exempt employees who make less than $50,000 being entitled to overtime pay. So we've talked about that, but have decided to just wait and see what the government does. And then, when to start FMLA procedures and paperwork. And number 10, the need for a meeting with Kent and elected officials, officer holders and department heads on the handbook and proper procedures. And I think I've made all the, listed all the comments that I had.
You, Shirley, you made the, the statement about the comp time, the accumulated comp time and, and making accommodations for that liability or something. What do you have, what do, what do you have in mind? I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think we can go through yearly and add that to the budget for every employee that was-
In essence, it's, it's probably one of those things that's, that's in what we, what we talk about 365 days of all of our county employees. It's probably in that quote, budget for benefits for normal, whatever normal is. But then that person doesn't take those. And is it never more than one year? Would that be the worst? And maybe we could put that in there. So it's, if, at the end of the year, last year or the year before, they were scraping the bottom of all the barrel where there was any money in order to pay, to make that 27th pay. We cleaned out every single one of those, so that money was no longer in there. But what if, what if that longtime employee then left on January- But what if, what if that longtime employee then left on January the 2nd? Then put it-
Most of the time, the difference between their salary, correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, but the difference in their salary and the new beginning salary for that place will take care of that compensation need. Is that most generally?
So far since I have been here, we have not had anybody leave that had any great accumulation of comp time. So I will say normally what you're saying would be true. So like in a situation where you had a 30-year employee in the extension office, when she left, because her salary was so much higher than the incoming person, there was room there to pay accrued vacation and all of that.
And that-
That being said, though, we do know of a situation right now where we have an employee who has almost the maximum 240 hours that they can't have. That's 36 weeks of pay. I mean, almost 37 weeks of pay. So if that person left-
I bet you you could go across the street and there's a deputy or two that's got closer to 480.
There is. I can verify that, yes. Because we recently had to pay out some of that because you can only accrue up to the maximum. So once you hit that, then you have to take overtime pay. So like for the-
I bet I could name one of them.
Yeah. So like for the person that has the 37 weeks, no. I mean, that difference in salary would not be enough to pay.
Yes, I, yeah. So do-
So can you just take that out and put it in to another fund? And it's kind of like, you know, we were going to put that extra, what, $10,000 or $15,000 a year in so that we would have the money for that 11th payroll with that DLGF saving period?
I think we need to request if they start using their hours.
Well, you can request it, but it won't happen.
Yeah.
He's already written letters requesting that we waive the policy, which is, that's not our policy, that's actually a Fair Labor Standards Act policy, so we can't waive it.
But I think what we need, Shirley, if you want to be guaranteed to, to be able to cover that, there needs to be a line item, maybe put in the Commissioner's budget. Each year of money appropriated to cover-
Comp time.
-payouts, employee buyouts or whatever, however you want to title it. And it may get used, it may not get used.
It may not get used. And that would maybe be something that, you know, discretionary at the end of the year if you could maybe transfer it, but it might be cutting off your nose, just bite your face if you transfer the money and then come January, you need it.
Yeah.
Do you think it would pass the DLGF rules? I don't know. Because we still haven't really set money aside for that 27th pay. It's going to happen again in nine more years.
Oh, I thought you were doing that. I thought there was a fund that-
We, State Board of Accounts sent you here.
We want, we did.
Well, then let me ask you this, Shirley, and all of you, I think, were here, either in council seat or Commissioner's seat during that 27th pay situation. When did it change? Because I spent 23 years working for the city. For every 11th year, we had a 27th pay, 10th or 11th year, whatever. And my salary went down on that year because my salary was taken and divided by 27 pays instead of 26. Why and when did that change by law? Who created the law?
I think whoever was dividing by 27 was doing it incorrectly.
But it worked for, it worked for 25 years-
The employees just sucked it up.
With the State Board of Accounts, it worked.
All I can say is, you know, you have to ask the attorneys, but I would suggest that that's, that's in that Fair Labor Standards. And, you know, you can't all of a sudden be tooling around and making $10 an hour and then because there's 27 pays, you're only going to make $9.70.
But you're not, you're not making $10 an hour, you're making $18,000 a year or $24,000 a year.
That's what I should say, that's what the difference is. If your salary is an annual, that's why we had to go and amend our salary ordinance and change it to a bi-weekly amount rather than an annual amount. Because if you're paid the annual amount, and that is exactly how State Board of Accounts says you do it, just what you're talking about. If your salary is annually $26,000, and typically it divides out to $1,000, and when you have a 27th payroll, you're going to divide that out to $900 and some dollars.
Yes.
If your salary's an annual salary. But Kent Irwin's office recommended that we not call it an annual salary, we call it a bi-weekly salary, which the State Board of Accounts will recognize if your salary ordinance says it that way. So it's kind of how you do salary ordinance.
So then-
So if we say a person like, I don't make $35,880 a year, I make $1,038 a month, you know, bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly. So otherwise, when the council creates the pay schedule or the salary ordinance, it is up to the council to determine how many pays there will be for this year and to determine their total budget needs to accommodate.
The total budget needs is up to the council to determine.
Yeah. So I guess what I don't, I don't understand is, if we're going to do it by bi-weekly, there shouldn't be a problem coming up with that 27th pay because you've, the council's already determined the salary ordinance. So therefore, when they go to create the budget, they need to accommodate their salary ordinance.
And it could have been that we didn't recognize it, the August that we were preparing the budget for the year we had the 27th pay, that we did not put it in there. And again, you know, I, like you said, when we laid people off, there's not, there are just not the same number of people in here to do the work. And again, sometimes we have reelections and people, the people that have been doing it for years aren't the same people. So I'm not sure how it happened. But when it came up, it was, the commissioners, I think, were originally made aware of it. And then all of a sudden, at a November or December council meeting, it was an emergency. And, you know, we, we didn't get it dealt with the way it needed to be.
So otherwise, Jane, are you saying then Kent Irwin's office recommended going to a bi-weekly salary ordinance?
Yes.
But the laws-
Well, no, State Board of Accounts-
Still allow us to do a yearly salary ordinance?
Yes. You could still do it annually. And like the State Board of Accounts that year that it was the 27th payroll actually addressed that issue and said, it's all in how your salary ordinance was written. So for the counties that had salary ordinances that were still annual amounts, they needed to divide that annual amount by 27 pay periods. But for, if you were a county that had a bi-weekly amount, there was nothing you needed to do differently. So, I mean, it was-
So in that year that it was the 27th pay, how was our salary ordinance written?
Well, originally, it was written annually.
For that year?
Yes.
Then why did, why, why wasn't their sal- our annual salaries divided by 27?
I'm not going to refight that battle. I wasn't here.
Oh, yes, that's right.
You had to.
You wasn't.
Live with it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Why wasn't it, Shirley? If the, if the salary ordinance was written as an annual salary ordinance for that year, why was that not divided by 27 pays?
I can tell you that I will not tell you until I'm finished.
Okay.
No, I mean, if you're, I give both sides of this. If you're an employee that normally your bring home, or your gross pay's $1,000, let's say, and suddenly I'm telling you this year, your bring home is $900 and some dollars. That's an issue.
There were several years, there were several years that, with 27 pay periods, that I took home less money.
Right. I mean, and I understand that. Because ultimately, at the end of the year, you're still making X number of dollars.
Yeah.
But if you're an employee, especially here, we all agree where most of our employees are very underpaid, that you're living paycheck to paycheck, that $50 or $70 less each paycheck-
Each paycheck.
Makes a huge difference.
We tried in like September or October, the commissioners voted to go bi-monthly for last year. And the employees almost tore this building apart, brick by brick, because there was no way they could realign their budget to have two paychecks a month instead of whatever it is.
First and 15th or whatever.
Yeah.
Because that would solve the problem forever.
And because that would-
Only for salary employees.
Only for salary employees. It'd be a closet nightmare for Jane and all of the hourly employees. But it just, they were such hullabaloo that we just rescinded it. And they were divided by 27. Somebody doesn't know how to get rid of that. One of, one of the prior 11 years, and I don't know if it was the most recent one or if it was prior to, but that 27th pay never happened.
Mm, just did. The last one, I was Commissioner then, and we divided it. It was an annual salary ordinance, and we divided it by 27 pays. Because there were the same employees that made the complaints this time, made them then, over it. But, but we went back down exactly how they wanted it set up and how it had been done for years past. And that's why, that's why I couldn't understand, if it was an annual salary ordinance, why the county had to cough up more money? Why the taxpayers had to cough up more money? Because it doesn't matter if it's an annual salary, whether you're paid one time or 50 times.
Or 50 times, or 52 times, or 12 times, or 44 times.
You still make this annual salary.
That's right.
But part of, part of Kent's argument is that even though you were calling it an annual salary once a year on a salary ordinance, that's the only time you ever referred to it as that way.
I'm sorry, it wasn't being computed that way.
Otherwise, you're, you're in the computer and everything is based on an all-bi-weekly amount. And so like when you had to figure an hourly amount for an employee, you would take their bi-weekly pay and divide that out and come down to an hourly thing. So I don't remember exactly what his wording was, but I know he explained-
I can't either, but it also affected the overtime pay.
Why?
Your overtime is, it was, it all boiled down to that hourly rate.
Yeah.
And anyhow, the recommendation and, you know, so we fixed that, but-
Yeah, I said partly-
I mean, I agree.
Yeah, partly we were going on the legal recommendations of, you know.
If we are now writing a bi-weekly salary ordinance, then if this year is 27 bi-weekly pay, then, then you have to budget for 27. Next year is 26, then it's 26. I mean, that-
Okay. So Jane, here, let me ask you this. When you prepare the numbers for the budget? And let's just say, for example, next year, next year is going to have 27 pays. When you prepare the wages and benefits line items, is that, is there a question when you're computing that to answer the question, should I be basing on that extra 27th pay so that it gets bugged up?
It would be up to each office holder when they submit their budgets.
I'm sorry, what?
The office holders, when they submit their budgets-
Yes.
-would have to calculate that. Because I don't compute budgets, they submit budgets.
They submit them.
So, yeah, I would, I would think we would need to recognize, hey, next year's a 27th payroll and get, when we send out the budget information, remind people, hey, when you're calculating salaries, you need to take this-
Make sure you cover-
Yeah, you need to take this into consideration.
Right.
Then it would be up to them to request.
I think that's one of those things that when you determine the date that we're going to meet, you know, commissioners and council, the holidays that we're going to pay, I think at part of that determination, is there a 27th pay for 2017 or 2018? Because really, you have, you have to deal with it in the budget six months before you're going to have to pay that first amount. And it really doesn't hit you until the 27th. It doesn't really hit you until December of that year, when you're going to have to come up with that extra pay.
Yeah. Whether, whether you make it official six months end of the year before or not, you have to discuss the issue, hey, guys, this is the 11th year.
That's right.
You know, it's time for 27 pays again.
I, I just think that's-
Pay period.
A checklist that ought to be in part of that year ending, just like the salary ordinance. One of those things you do at the end of the year. I've taken up way too much of your guys' time, but I, I think these were the important things that I learned today. I'd like to go back and look my laptop because I think I've received one or two other letters from, emails from people.
If you could, if you could put that in some type of a summary-
Okay.
-of all your notes and everything.
Okay.
And then we can, we can actually put it in writing-
Yes.
Maybe, or if we so desire to.
Just print that summary page in the, to the place book.
If we, yeah. Yeah, whatever changes we make, but.
And again, I think, you know, depending upon whether you were a salaried employee or an hourly employee, it depended upon how strongly you felt about that 27th pay being recomputed. Some people, let her hand them out with their paychecks, all of a sudden, you go, get from, you know, X number of dollars every two weeks to $50 less. It's difficult to-
Gary, this is from, I'm reading from a State Board of Accounts, they do a county bulletin where they give, and under a, the particular month, it was April of 2015, under payroll issues, says, although we recommend using a 26 bi-weekly amount or 52 weekly amount on the salary ordinance. So that is what State Board of Accounts recommends also, and that was what Kent Irwin had recommended. They did go on to say, if your salary ordinance is an annual, if an annual salary amount is used, and the amount is divided into 26 or 52 equal pays, there should be a policy in place on how salaries will be prorated for partial years. Should also be a policy in place for dealing with years that have 27 pay periods. And see, that was a thing, we had no policy in place for that. So it kind of became an issue for those who were here at the time, not me.
So by doing a bi-weekly salary ordinance, are we adhering to state statute that says that the council should create a yearly salary ordinance?
I would take that to mean they just have to do it once a year. Not that they have to, because right here, the State Board of Accounts themselves are recommending, it says, we recommend using a 26 bi-weekly amount or 52 weekly-
Well, I thought they had changed, yeah, I thought they had changed that.
Yeah.
And went to the bi-weekly.
Yeah.
As I was going out as Commissioner. Because I thought we did it then.
And it is different for elected officials because an elected official has to be paid an annual salary.
Okay.
It says, based on, we also, we take out a exception if elected official's annual salary is not completely paid within a calendar year. County council should, at its annual budget meeting, adopt a salary ordinance fixing the salaries of county officers, deputies, assistants and employees' ordinance is separate from the budget ordinance.
So maybe we ought to, um-
And see, this one thing, like right there, that says we're supposed to do it at the budget meeting, but our salary ordinance aren't done until December. And I mean, that was how it was done when I came in, but probably we should change that to do what State Board of Accounts recommends. And had they both been done at the same time, then that would have avoided-
Everybody would have been on board.
Then everyone would be on board, but next year, we're going to have to... I really think that that's the better place to deal with it, the salary ordinance, when you're working on the budget, instead of in a hurry at the end of the year. I appreciate your time.
Well, we appreciate the time that you put into it.
Considering this. And like I say, these are just questions that came up and because we were in, we had Before you dismiss me here, before I run out on you, Jane, did you sell them all tickets for Saturday?
I hit them all up anyway.
You're going to rub it in, aren't you?
You see me looking at you, right?
Yes, I felt it.
We have some serious repairs, we're in need of serious repairs. And so this is a fundraising. And even if you can't attend, do you have an auction item that you could donate?
What a beautiful basket from Unbox.
Guys, we're on camera, guys, we can't do that.
Something that you could contribute to the silent auction? But we'd love to have you all there anyhow, but-
Jane just said we can't do this on-
Pardon?
You can't do that on camera.
I can't do it on, sorry.
That's okay.
I sent, everything I asked was said in the last minute or two. I'd have to wait till you adjourn, so I'll just pass. I'm trying to catch you before the council meeting tonight. Is there a deadline, Gary, you're looking for having this done? We're in harvest mode.
Well, yeah, we are. No. No, I, I guess I was hoping to get a little farther along today than we had.
And that's, that's my fault, I apologize, but I will try to summarize this and get it to you and so that you can.
Well, thank you, because I think we've addressed some of the 911 and the 24/7 people, some of the issues that they were concerned about, and that's good.
Well, that's good. I think it's important to have a consistent payroll policy through, after all.
Some things that I was looking at in the standard handbook, and a lot of it's the same in the 911, or the emergency services handbook, but in 1.7, on page four, I think that productive work environment, rather than will not be tolerated, should say could be, or can be grounds for dismissal. I just, I think.
Instead of not be tolerated, will be grounds for dismissal?
Could be grounds.
I'm sorry, where are you?
I meant on 1.7, page four. I wondered about that, putting a little more teeth into that. Harassment and disrupting employee, you know, I just don't like the idea of employees hollering and screaming at each other and department heads and so on and so forth. Either one.
I think that's over on, in the things about terminations, if that's one of the things.
Yeah. And maybe it doesn't need to be changed, maybe, maybe the termination addresses that well enough. And then I had on, under 2.7, with, on page eight, under the full-time and the part-time employees, I wanted us to possibly, if we did introduce a paid time off type of, or earned time off schedule, I wanted the, I wanted us to consider the part-time employees to be part of that earned time off schedule. So that would, that would just depend on whether we accepted that earned time off system.
I just want to throw that out there, I think that would be awesome to give some benefits to our part-time employees, because you have some people that choose to be part-time.
Yeah.
And it just seems unfair that you're penalizing.
I mean, we can't, we can't seem to give them seniority. I mean, if it, like, for instance.
And that's another thing I would like to see added, if you had somebody that worked five years part-time and then went to full-time, they should be able to count those five years towards earning vacation.
Yeah.
Yes.
And things.
The only problem with that is.
Which if you go to PTO, they're already earning vacations, so that's not an issue. But I'm saying in the past, like if you go to a PTO policy, if you had somebody that had been here for years.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the only problem with that is they've been here five years, but at half-time or whatever, so it's only two and a half years of service.
True.
Really.
But right now, we give them T-Ro, so.
I mean, so, I mean, it would.
Give them credit for their hours worked.
Maybe so, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then I had on 2.7, yeah, that's, and 3.4, which is page 16. I had a question of whether the commissioners or the council actually approved job descriptions. It says here that council does. Do you recall, Jane, through your conversations with Irwins or any?
Um, I don't.
Who actually develops the job descriptions?
But I, I know, I know, I know county council sets, like, how many employees.
Yeah, and their salaries.
Yeah, but I don't know that they would do the job descriptions.
I think the job descriptions are done more by the department heads.
Can I ask Holland?
So that was a question, that was more of a question than anything. Then we have, also, I had a question on page, starting on page 15, 3.2, the work hours. I guess I didn't understand why we have so many different work hours. For instance, the animal control works only 39 hours a week by the schedule that's in here. Circuit court works 32 and a half. Courthouse administration works 33 and a half. Then the highway, of course, works 40. Then you have the probation staff works 32 and a half. The prosecutor's office works 33 and a half. The soil and water conservation district, I think that needs to be wiped completely off there. We don't have that department any longer, do we? At all. And then you go on the other page, superior courts at 32 and a half and victims assistance is at 32 and a half. All of the courts plus probation works the 32 and a half, except for the prosecutor's office. And they work the same as the courthouse employees. I just wondered why that, those were, mainly the prosecutor, why do they work an hour more than the court, courts? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea.
Okay. And why animal control only works 39 hours instead of the 40 hours? Or 33 and a half, the same as the courthouse? I mean, I, I just guess I had a question more than anything.
Okay. Oh, I see, because they're taking an hour and a bunch of periods while subtracting theirs.
And my concerns, I guess my concerns is the probation office. Does the state send down a salary?
Yes, for probation officers.
Based on a 40-hour work week?
Oh, I don't know about that.
I mean, have we taken, the states report salaries and, and they're only working 32 and a half hours for a 40-hour salary? I don't.
That wouldn't be right.
No.
See, that says probation office staff, though, so does that include the probation officers themselves? Or just the?
Secretary receptionist.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
I don't know.
That could be a question for Jenna, certainly.
But I think we'd have to do some, we need to do some research as far as what are those salaries sent down from the state based on hourly basis? So those are, that was, just basically questions on that section, more so than anything, just for my learning purposes. And then I had 3.1, 3.15, point one. The overtime in the second paragraph, it says overtime pay is based on actual hours worked. Holiday hours will be considered as hours worked for purposes of calculating overtime hours. I think that needs to be taken out and only based on.
That section is also, actually, it already been revised once and it says, you've got the addendum in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Right now, holiday, everything but sick pay counts toward overtime hours.
Yes.
Holiday, vacation, bereavement.
I think that paragraph should say overtime pay is based on actual hours worked.
And that is what Ken Irwin's office has recommended, that we do.
And that has come from Ken Irwin.
Yes, because we asked him to clarify the Fairlighter Standards Rules, and he said that actual hours worked are the only things that are covered.
And on down here, Jane, the net, the last paragraph, it says overtime monetary reimbursement is based on hour, actual hours worked, except that time off for paid holidays, vacation, and bereavement shall count as hours worked for purposes of calculating overtime compensation. That needs to be removed as well, I think.
Right. That's what Ken's office had recommended we do. The same time, in the next section under, the statutory time is the same thing, yeah.
Is the same, same way. I think we need to remove those statements. And those are based on work time only, correct? And that's under, that's from Ken Irwin's office recommending that. And then I know I'm going to get in trouble for this, but I guess I really want to bring it up. 3.17 on page 23. I, I'm really, I never liked this when I was commissioner before, but I, and I may be fighting a losing battle this time, too, but I think if an employee comes to work and just like we had a power outage and we allowed them to leave and close their offices because of the power outage, if they come to work, okay, we'll compensate them for the full day. But if for some odd reason the building or the facility is closed for some reason, weather-related or whatever, I think if employees want that they paid, they need to use one of their earned time off days, if we go to the earned time off system. I don't think it's, I don't think it's taxpayers' place to pay people if they don't work, if they don't come to work. Because we have emergency, and then we turn around and during weather emergencies, those 24/7 departments, we pay them time and a half when they come in. Because we have to compensate everybody equally, so to speak. I don't know, that's just something to think about. I really think that needs to be addressed. 15.
So basically, if there's a blizzard and we don't open the courthouse, the people don't get paid.
Unless they use vacation days or.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Earned time off.
Yeah.
However, however we work it. Yeah. I never got paid when I didn't go to work.
I mean, if I don't, if I don't go to work, I don't get paid. I mean, for, for the most part. I mean, my, my, basically, my salaries, or my wages are a yearly salary, so there's days I don't go to work and then there's days that I work around the clock. You know, so, I mean.
Like drive-in form?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so, but, I don't know, I just, I think it costs the taxpayers a lot of money, this policy does, because like I said, that in lieu of people not coming to work.
Yeah.
Getting their full day's pay, we have to pay our 24-hour service people that have to come in time and a half.
Yeah.
To compensate. And that's, it's just costing us a lot of money. Overtime, it can, if we have a bad winter or whatever.
You haven't had that problem lately?
No, we have not.
The day we had the storm and.
I mean, I think if everybody comes to work and for some odd reason the building has to be shut down and, and we send them home, they should be compensated for the whole day. Or.
They came planning to work, but if they don't come in at all.
Exactly.
That makes good sense.
I mean, because I have seen in the past, I think, of people that were scheduled off on vacation, they got their vacation day back on that day. They didn't have to use it.
Must work for life or no.
And then on 4.1, the vacations, I, I would like to propose that we create, rather than vacation time, sick time, and holiday pay, we create a earned time off system that for the hours they work, they earn time off and for the years of service, and I've worked it out to, we need to do some more calculations just to make sure that these multipliers are, are close, but like the one to five years of service is .097? No, I'm sorry, that was an example that I found. The numbers that I was using for each one of these categories, after six months, they get five days vacation time. Well, if you take their work time times .10 for the first two sections, that multiplier will give them basically the same days they currently have off each year with their vacation time, their sick time, and their holiday time. But there again, if they're taking.
Is this on a 40-hour work week or 33?
No, it doesn't matter. It'll, it'll work on any, any of the hours worked, I believe. I, like I said, we need to do some more math to just, just look at it for sure, but, and then, then it goes up in the third category to, if you raise that to .126, that would still cover those days. Then the next category at .150, and then the last category at .176. My only concern.
The first two was .10, right?
Yes, yes. My concern, Jane, is still how much more work would this kind of system add to Stephanie's job? I mean, I want to be, I don't want to be overly burdensome, I don't want it to be over burdensome to Stephanie.
This is taking out holiday pays?
Why are we multiplying by the .10 or the .126?
The hours worked for that pay period would be taken times that multiplier to determine their earned time off each pay period.
Okay. Wouldn't it be hard to do?
So if you and Stephanie would want to work those numbers some and kind of play with them to get some idea of how difficult it would be bookkeeping-wise? Because I know, like, my wife's paycheck, each paycheck, her pay stub, it has her total earned time off calculated each pay period. How much she's used of it, how much she has coming yet. And that, those figures would have to come from your office, correct? I mean, and I don't know whether the pay stub has that capabilities or the software would have that capability.
Yeah, that's why I'm making a note to follow up with Lau and ask them.
Okay.
And you're talking about deleting holiday pay, that this would take care of holiday and sick leave and vacation?
Yes, yes. And then that would give the employees a choice, if, for instance, if we take the Fourth of July off and it's on Wednesday, and the courthouse closes on Wednesday, July 4th, the employee would have the option, they can either take that day off unpaid, or they could use some of their earned time off and be paid for that day, if they choose to. If they choose to not be paid for that day, and they want to save their earned time off for a vacation in August, say, and then extended leave of August, in August, then they can use that earned time then. It allows them to use that earned time for sick leave, if they were to have some surgery, they could build up that earned time off and be paid 100% of their pay for the whole time that they were off, two weeks or three weeks or whatever. If they, it gives them the opportunity to save bank that time, and it would bank it.
It's saving their time for their advantage, is what it says.
Yeah, yeah, they could, yeah. I mean, it would carry over, now keep in mind, it would carry over, because they couldn't, wouldn't lose it. I think we could, we could create a policy that allow, well, you can only bank 100 hours or 500 hours, or whatever that case may be, at a time, like, like we have our comp time, if we wanted to. But, but it still allows them, you know, if, if they want to take half of this year's earnings and half of next year's earnings and take a four-week cruise or, or whatever, it gives them that.
The option to be able to do it.
Option to be able to do it. I know there's, from time to time, when the surgery department up at Newcastle does not work, there's times, from time to time, Jamie may take earned time off.
Yeah.
Or take it unpaid if she wants to save her, build her earned time for, for something else. So it, it just gives them, employees a little more flexibility. My concern is, I want to make sure these multipliers do not subtract, they, they don't lose any of their current time that they've already earned, or I want to be within a few hours.
No.
But I'm just, my biggest concern is the workload that it's going to put on Stephanie, and whether the software will allow us to do that or not. So if you could kind of play with that idea with Stephanie and Lau and Jane.
Okay.
If you don't mind. But i- if we do that, that will really take out a lot of the vacation language, the holiday language, and the sick leave language in the book if we do that. Plus, like I said earlier, if we do something like that, I'd like to see us give it to the part-time people as well, so that they could, that could be somewhat of a benefit then. I mean, kind of a thank you, you know? Yeah, those are the ones that would be amended if we did that earned time off. 4.11, .1, the terms and conditions of vacation leave, the 4.2 would be amended, and the 4.3 would be amended. And then 4.17, or no, 4.17, I'm sorry. I had a question. Do we still offer the 26-week long-term disability? We have, we have short-term disability?
Mm-hmm.
Up to 26 weeks.
I believe so.
Greater than, I guess greater than 26 weeks. I thought we, or used to, we offered two programs, and I think the employee had to pay for the long-term disability.
Liquid, as far as through insurance or something, I think we offered some, like an app, well, we offer like Aflac, and I think there's a couple other programs that I guess would be for that. I'm, I'm not real familiar with those. Stephanie would be more so.
But it was, originally, it was through our insurance carrier.
Okay.
And, and we offered to, eight days to, to 26 weeks disability, and we paid for that. The employer, or, the county paid for that.
Yeah, we still do that.
And then I think we offered a 26 to 52 weeks long-term or something like that. And I think the employee, if they wanted it, they could opt to take it and pay the premiums for it. But that's not offered through the insurance.
Not.
Is it, is our short-term offered through our health?
Yes, we still pay, we still, the county pays automatically a certain amount of short-term dis, like accidental death and dismemberment and short-term disability on every, I believe only full-time employees.
Okay.
But.
And that pays how much of their salary?
I could not take it off ahead. I'd have to research.
All right, okay. Those were all the notes that I had, and like I said, most of them interchange with the public, public safety handbook too, I think. But I just, I don't know where we want to go with that, all, all of those, but we want to throw all of them out the window, or what, how much of Shirley's rec, questions that she brought up, how much of that we want to address. It sounds to me like she's in the emergency services handbook more so than the, than the standard handbook. Jane, I saw you sent, sent me an email on those codes.
Yeah, those two IC codes that she.
Did you see what Shirley was saying, Michelle's telling us, or?
Um, yeah, let me pull my, begin. The first one, the 36-2-5-3, basically is about compensation of officers and employees, like the, the county fiscal body shall fix the compensation of officers, et cetera, et cetera, it's that. And then at the, the very last section of that says it does not apply to community corrections programs. So, so they are different than every other, because this even refers to, you know, like the highway department and, and all the different ones, county health. So that's really all that says, is that they're to be treated differently. And then in the 11-12-2-3.5, Community Corrections Advisory Board shall appoint a director, and then, and then that's section A, and then section B, Community Corrections Advisory Board may establish personnel policies, procedures, and salary classification schedules for its employees. Employees of a community corrections program are county employees. The policies, procedures, and schedules established under this subsection may not be inconsistent with those established for other county employees. So it's kind of saying that community, as I read, this community corrections advisory board can establish policies and procedures and all that, but they can't be in conflict with the county's established policies and procedures.
But you're, you still haven't said anything about salary.
I'd say if you read that, it does not say the advisory board sets the salaries.
Yeah, and I didn't think it did.
I mean, it says salary classification schedules for its employees, but it, it doesn't say. So, I don't know what exactly would be a salary classification.
That's probably that range.
Okay.
That Shirley, and I, I've seen that paper.
Yeah.
Not for that year, but for this year. So I, I would say that they can set a range, that the council can pick anything in between that range, in that range, correct?
Yes, I think.
Yeah, okay, all right. And I forgot to ask Colin if he had researched it anymore. There are some things in here that, that include the county council that I question whether they should, it should be just commissioners, and I forgot to ask Colin this morning while he was here, whether, because he was going to look into that. But that's all I had. If somebody has something else that they want to add, or look, want us to look at? Oh, Jane, I wanted to ask one other thing of you. In 5.1, or 5.10 of the emergency services personnel handbook on page 69, the take-home vehicles, are we performing the Internal Revenue Code requirements on those vehicles?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm. We do not do that for any county vehicles at this time, no.
Okay. Is there a reason we're not, or, I, I'm, I'm just asking, I, never has been done.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know why it hasn't been done.
Okay, then can you answer this? Is this by law that then the second, the statement of the police vehicles are considered non-personal use vehicles? Police officers are required to use vehicle for commuting and personal use and incidental to use for law enforcement purposes? Was that our, is that our county policy? Is that Irwin's recommendation? Is that law that we can't, we don't count then?
I, I can't say for sure. I, I want to say I think it is law, because they are, like, if they're in, like, if Joey's at the restaurant with his family having dinner, and he's got his chair as a vehicle, and he gets a call, he's going to leave his family at that restaurant, and he's going to leave and go on that call. So I think because they, they have to be available at all times to be in service, they're not considered to ever be out of service.
All right. Explain to me like that, I, I can see that, yeah.
And since we don't have sufficient employees or whatever to cover all the bases, they have to be ready to go and ready to work at all times. So that's why they're allowed to take the vehicles home, and they're not considered
I just didn't know whether, I, I mean, I guess, if we don't carry this out, if we choose not to carry this out, we might as well take it out of the handbook, as far as these other take-home vehicles that aren't emergency personnel.
I think the only ones that take them home are the ones that are using them for law enforcement. We don't have, probation officers don't take their vehicles that they use for picking up people and stuff, they don't take their vehicles home. The only ones that do are the chair from the deputies that are on call.
Okay, Matt?
If there was some.
The health department doesn't?
As soon as I say, I think there are, there's, Richard takes the county vehicle, the county highway truck home, I think.
He's on call 24/7.
He's not considered like a police officer.
I mean, this.
No, he's not for law enforcement.
This specifically says police.
Yeah, I was going to say, this, it's not the same.
Yeah.
And like, whoever that's their vehicles, I don't even know who all has one, animal shelter, has county vehicles, health department, has county vehicles, Bill and Daniel, area plan.
And I don't know, Bill takes his home or not?
Prostration has.
They have two vehicles, but they don't take them home, I don't think.
I'll make a comment.
Yeah, I don't think.
Because we've actually had a complaint about one of their vehicles.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's, I, I, all I'm saying is, if we don't do this, then we need to scratch it.
Yeah, take it out.
If, if we're going, if it's going to be in the book, the personnel book, we need to address the vehicles that are being driven home, non-police vehicles. We need to address it and make sure that we're covering that section of the handbook. I, I mean, I.
I mean, technically, that, that's not, that's an internal revenue code, that's a law.
Yes.
Yes, that's ours.
And one of the other counties, I, I can't tell you which county it is without checking my email, I could tell you when I went back to my office, but one of the counties got audited by the IRS for their apparel and things, and got deemed for that.
Can you do some, a little bit of research on that? Because I think when we were writing this handbook originally, it included police vehicles, all take-home vehicles. And I, I just want to make sure that we don't, we're not excluding somebody that still should be covered under IRS laws.
That they get credit on their tax statement for.
For that compensation.
I mean, the thing is, if they're driving, they're, if they're driving county vehicles for personal use, they have to claim that as income. If they don't want to have to claim it as income, they just need to leave the county vehicles parked here at the courthouse.
Yeah.
I mean, which is certainly an option. So if you say no more personal use of county vehicles, then that solves the problem.
And I, and I, I still, I question, I think it becomes personal use when the, when you clock out and you drive from here to home. The drive from here to home is personal use.
That is personal use.
You don't have a county-owned vehicle that you get to drive home.
Yeah, I mean, community, there's my personal vehicle, or the county's vehicle, I mean, community is personal.
Yeah.
Like, if.
You, you may drive it home, and it sits in your driveway until the next morning when you drive to work, but that drive home.
Is still personal.
And drive to work is still personal use.
Yes.
Because I, I know what the argument will be is, well, I, I only drive it home, park it, and then I drive back to work. Well, you're off the clock when you leave here, so that's personal use. So I, I just think we need to, if it's our policy, and, and we're not going to carry it out, then it ought to come out of the handbook. If it's fed a state federal law.
It'll be in there.
And it needs to be in here, then, then we need to carry it out.
Yeah.
I just don't want us getting in trouble, or Jane getting in trouble.
You're going to blame me no matter what.
Yeah. Who doesn't? She's the bookkeeper.
Thank you.
That's all I've got, if somebody else has got any more suggestions. Where do we want to take this? Do we want to, I mean.
We need to go ahead and make some additions. I haven't seen the amendment in there that was made on, you know, the health tax for employees who retired and went on a different insurance, then come back, husband retired and whatever.
I think.
Is that amendment in there?
I may have it, but.
It's not in my book, because I, this is the book I got when I started, I know I made the amendment after that.
I've stuck some amendments in here. See, that's under Health and Defense Amendment, or?
What book is this?
Oh, that's retirement.
Yes, that's right. It should be an amendment to the...
I'll see. Maybe I don't have that.
I don't remember.
Jane, do you remember, we discussed last meeting, what, of having another afternoon session next meeting?
Yeah, that was, we discussed insurance.
Insurance, okay. Are we going to have anyone from the insurance company here or to present next year's contract, or at that time, or...
I don't know, I figured we'd talk to the guys on Thursday.
Okay.
We, they invited Leo to lunch.
All right. Because probably we need to be making that decision, don't we?
Yes, they said November was soon after. And they would have more data by that time to give us as to where we stood. I think that's right in the chain.
I think so.
All right. It would probably be nice if we could have one of them here, so they can answer some questions as far as...
Before they get to this next meeting?
Yeah, in that afternoon session, maybe.
Okay.
And then, if they can be here, so that they...
Do you want the numbers guy, the salesman, or... Garrett would be the one to give you numbers.
Probably the, who's the lady that comes all the time?
Angela.
Angela. She could probably help us. I mean, if we're going to talk about spousal, you know, the...
The changes that she wants to make.
Then, yeah. Whether we're, whether we want required proof of spouse, proof of...
Yeah.
Eligibility, eligibility's requirements.
Make sure that the people that we have as dependents aren't really dependents.
I mean, I'm sure they've got set forms that...
Yes.
Templates that we could send out.
That was one thing, she said they really, she got a lot of inquiries and stuff about that at the health fair. That people, the employees were interested in, so she was able to clear up some situations, some different ones, but they asked a lot of questions. She felt like the health fair was very helpful with...
I know, you know, we sent out the idea that if your spouse, your spouse had to prove that their employer did not furnish insurance for them to qualify. But I know there's exceptions to the rule that other companies use, if it's going to cost you more than what a single plan would cost here, you know, or dollars, that they put dollar amounts on it, or...
Make sure that stepchildren aren't covered under three policies.
And those kind of things, and I just, I mean, we're looking at a budgetary amount of 1.4 million for next year, and I just think we need to try to look at trying to save even more money.
We might do what Wayne County did, is they found out the majority of prescriptions that their employees were using, and they had a bid process with the local pharmacies, and put them out to the different ones in Wayne County, and let all of them bid against each other. And one, one company came up a winner, and I will not quote that on television, but, and which one did not participate at all, and was the highest place in town, but they insisted that the employees go to that pharmacy. They gave them the best price, and if they didn't want to go to that one, they could go to one of their choice, but they'd pay the difference in the quoted prices.
I think, I think, too, that we need to address the issue. You know, we're having a little bit of trouble with some of our providers that our employees are going to, or there's backlash with some of them. Maybe we need to create the plan, or modify the plan a little bit to, to maybe just encourage them to go to a different provider.
If they go to the one that doesn't want to participate, or doesn't want to go along with our program, they don't go there.
So I, I was just thinking that those are some of the things we needed to talk about prior to signing some contract.
Sounds good to me.
Back to, while you've been talking, I'm reading on the IRS that police vehicles under the personal use of a vehicle are considered non-personal use vehicles. And it kind of gives some specifics, like clearly marked police, fire, or public safety officer vehicles. And then there's a section for unmarked law enforcement vehicles. So, but in the unmarked law enforcement vehicles, if the vehicle is used by a full-time law enforcement officer who is authorized to carry firearms, execute warrants, and make arrests, so pretty much any of our, like, sheriff deputies would qualify.
Yeah.
And maybe...
EMA Director.
Maybe like Community Corrections, yeah, I mean, any of those that are...
I'm not sure about Community Corrections. I guess I have a question about Community Corrections.
Yeah, I was going to say, I wouldn't be for sure on that one, but public safety officers is what it is. Clearly marked police, fire, or public safety officer.
I'm not sure a DOC officer is...
I was thinking, because they carry guns, so it's the only reason I was thinking about them.
Is, is a public safety officer.
When it says full-time law, law enforcement officers, are they not considered law enforcement?
No, I don't think so.
So even if they carry arms, they don't execute warrants or make arrests? Right, so they would not qualify?
Well, I don't think they do. I think they have to have, although I think a probation officer can make an arrest.
That's what I was wondering about. Community corrections officers are responsible for people that are still on probation at such part of the time, they're on work...
But I think they have to have a deputy to pick them up if they violate it. But I think a probation officer can pick them up.
Yeah, I think so, too.
And, and hold, I, I don't know. That'd be a question for Jenna and Michelle, I guess.
Well, we have raised a lot of issues today. I'd accept a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Don't move, too, true. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Me, your turn.
Thank you.